Well, good evening, everybody. I guess we're recording.
Yes.
Yep.
Um. Because it's our reorganization meeting. I'm lucky enough to be the chairman for thirty seconds or something. Anyway, so I'll probably mess a few things up, but we'll call the meeting in order. Do I gotta hit this?
You can. And apologize that we're late because we're ahead of meeting.
Yes, and we did come from a meeting. The personnel committee had a meeting with AMPGF, and so we are running a few minutes late, so apologize for that. Um. Before we do the pledge, should we come through the mission statement first?
We're gonna do a pledge and then you.
Awesome. So let's rise and do the pledge of the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the public information stands one nation under God in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Our mission statement, in partnership with the communities, the mission of the Delaware Elementary School District is to educate individuals in an environment of trust and respect, so they become self-directed, responsible by. Um, that that said, this time, I think everybody is here. Welcome Micah as our new school owner. And our guests, Ronnie, I'll just acknowledge you just because our former board member. Ronnie misses us, so he's back. Also, in attendance is Rob Belk and obviously myself. Um, so with that, I think our first thing is a motion, and we get a motion to um, decide where new chairperson. Oh, maybe I should.
No, you gotta do election.
Yeah, I think I do.
Yeah. This is the only time of the year we do it.
Yeah, I'm in the auto order person, so. Uh, so, yeah, so first order business is election, electing our chairperson. So I guess we'll open the floor for nominations.
I nominate Lindsay.
Okay, have a nominations for Lindsay. Second.
Second, second.
Second by David. Okay. Other nominations? Okay, discussion? Any discussion? Okay, although do we have to roll call this? This is just straight out. Okay, all those in favor of Lindsay Leach as our chairperson for the twenty twenty-three year, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Lindsay. Let me hand the gamble back.
I told David I said it's my last year. Get prepared for it.
Yeah.
It's all about me, it's all of us. All right, um, so do any changes to the agenda this evening, Shannon?
Uh, we do not.
All right, the motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, public comments and rebel recognition. I know it's not on here right away, but we are gonna acknowledge Micah tonight, and I have this wonderful um thing that I'm gonna read for you, school board. Oath of, member of office, you don't have to stand up or anything. Stay seated, but it is an honor that we were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy, and providing vision the board with extensive participation of the community, and visions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to obtain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve educational, education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools to advance the visions for ourselves. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Um, so I'm going to pass this down and underneath the bottom, um, done. Um, you will just be signing that you swear to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state, and then I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District number twenty-one sixty-four.
Yep.
You know, when you see things and then you're like numbers are to the best of my judgment and ability, if so, say I will. Beautiful. So, um, we'll get this signed down there and then send it back down to me. Welcome aboard, Michael. We're very happy that you're here, so. And Ronnie is happy that you're here. Yes, wonderful. Okay, any other public, public comments or rebel recognition?
Well, I'm not sure if you know this or not, but Owen Leach scored two thousand points for the DGF Rebel team and the second person in DGF history to have done so. So congratulations, Dylan.
Thank you, guys. Little pressure at that game. It's a little tough, but um, yeah, I'm super proud of how they've achieved it, so. Pretty cool when you realize that you're only the second person in thirty years to do such a thing, so. That was awesome. Uh, any other youth things happening that are youth squads here? Anything going on? Kids like activities at school, any? Um, the basketball, community had basketball tournaments are starting up, um, well organized.
I missed it. I was, I was eight.
It was good. They were all excited and. Well, that's awesome. Well, I'm looking forward to seeing all the things coming out when I come to games now, when they have the things that the kids, oh, it was on Facebook, or not Facebook, uh, Twitter today, the Knowledge Ball, or is it debate?
Knowledgeable, knowledgeable, got first place.
Knowledgeable, got first place. Congratulations to those kids. That's awesome. That's awesome. There was.
Can't remember, was it Ferguson Falls, maybe?
Yeah. She wasn't? Oh, she wasn't. So why don't they do that at Knowledge Ball? Like five kids on a team or something? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, wonderful. Well, let's move on to seven point one board committee reports. You wanna talk about what we just, or other meetings here?
Right now, you know, we've got the agreements that's in play, essentially trying to straighten out the old system. Um, it's been kind of a lingering issue, and so it allows us to enter the union which has brought agreements um, with regard to that. We're working with the union there, trying to get things straightened out. So, right now, we're, we have what do you call it, a step three meeting, and we have to get a response, but I think we're waving some timelines in order to let the process kind of come out, because we're, we've been working diligently on this essentially since last summer. And so we're learning more. Union's very respectful. Run forth their concerns.
And we are planning our meeting with them, um, our second meeting in February before the meeting to just have an update, uh, the three, whoever's on personnel will be meeting that group again, so. Um, so, yeah. Any other meetings? Kind of December's a slow month, so we all kind of don't have a lot. Nicole's looking like she's. We had, I think we had, um, facilities meeting. I was trying to decide to have this tape.
That's right.
It's not functioning fully. It was a pretty simple meeting. We, you covered most of the things that was already covered at our board meeting to update the public and the rest of the board, so it was a pretty, you know, biffle. I remember.
Yeah, it was just a kind of a recap, but we have a recap, yep.
Just to make sure we didn't have questions, which you had already covered, plethora of, so I don't think we have any. Beautiful. Let's move on to seven point two superintendent report. Shannon just passed on a package. Did everybody get the packet on that question?
But it that way too. So, um, as you guys know, Minko Construction is our new construction manager to finish off the project. What you have in front of you that I just passed.
Do you have an extra one?
Oh, yes.
Wanna look at it?
For sure. Um, this is, uh, so this is in our document. You know, we have our construction document, which you maybe have in your packet. Do they have our, yeah. Um, so anyway, this I got from Marla. She is the business manager. They come for Minko Construction. She will sit down with us each month and kind of walk us through where we're at. And so if you look at your front page, that's Delaware Elementary, I believe, right? Your front page, yep. And so what this is, is bid package one and bid package two for the Delaware project. You can see what's still out. Um, there's retainage dollars still out, so we've heard of bid package one.
You're like this, like. Ronnie, are you good then?
Say your phone.
No.
Okay.
Maybe it's not up there.
Hi.
Yeah.
I'm like looking at the green, is it like?
Something was rattling at us, yeah. Um, so anyway, if you look at that, bit package one, the reason I wanted to go through this is there's still some retainage out there for some of these businesses or companies. Uh, there's a little work that got pushed back from bit package one to bit package two. Uh, or wasn't completed, I should say, during the bit package one timeline. So those people, as an example, Delaware Parking Lot happened during recently, not during the package one. So, anyway, that's what's left or remaining to clean that up, and bit package two obviously the bigger piece, and that's the second half for the run. Um, right behind it is the same information, just on a spreadsheet the other way. Um, it's bit package one, bit package two, and it's, it's the same thing. She just thought maybe you'd like to look at it that way. It's a little bit easier to look at, but that's all Delaware. And where we're at with that, to finish up that project, uh, between bid package one and two, we're at one point two oh one million. You can see that number there. Okay? Um, your next sheet is the Glendon one. Um, same thing. It's bit package one, what's remaining, balance to finish there, uh, the retained costs, all those things. And so you look at the very bottom of the Glendon project, there's one point three, uh, sixty-eight million to finish it. Most of that is retainage dollars. Uh, we met with them as, I should say, part of this meeting was to discuss, should we start cutting some retainage checks to some of these companies or contractors? Um, they're gonna give us a recommendation next week. Um, very likely, we will start cutting some retainage checks for some work that's been done over a year, year and a half ago, uh, that those companies have turned in what they need to turn in, uh, and et cetera. The other part of that is if we're not a hundred percent sure, she's not, they're gonna give us a recommendation, and maybe we pay two percent of that five percent, so the retainer is a five percent. Then maybe we pay two percent as a good faith, yeah, thanks for all your work. I know it's a long time ago, but we still haven't had it completely closed out until the state signs off on it. We'd like to hold something just in case something comes up in that process, so. We're gonna work through exactly what that is, but again, to honor these companies and say thank you for your work a long time ago. Okay, so if you total those two together, I think you're at two point six-ish million. Not quite, not quite, two point six. And then if you grab our sheet, that's posted by you. I'm sorry, looking in this.
Oh, which sheet?
It's our construction, our construction.
Oh, right there, okay.
Okay, uh, you can look at the bottom there, our total project costs, and that what we have figured out what's left, and that's a lot of different figures, but you can look up at the top, our cash balance is four point, just about five million. So, again, we're, we're in a good place. We made a lot of adjustments on this project to get to that spot. And we have some things on the back that are in our wish list, right, that are things that we haven't done yet, and would like to, that bids on additional items. That's two point four million roofs as a part of that, which we already don't give your margin our extra authority to that, um, which is the bulk of it, but there are some other things we are gonna hold up, and I will visit with even more um, as we move forward. I just want to make sure that the dollars are there before we start committing them to some other piece or some other project in the building. If it's more roofs, we can finish. There's more HVAC issues that we can be fixing from the old parts of the building. That all fits under the scope of this project. Um, so, anyway, okay? Um, questions on any of that?
Isn't the shop budget included in the two point six, or is that part of the wish list?
The shop is its own budget. It's completely, yeah, so you can see, I'm sorry, no, it's in there. It should be on the front. It's on the back is the breakdown, but sorry, I didn't look at this one today, but it should be, uh, here. We have the, oh, right there, shop budget. So it's expected at one point five, so it's a part of the front. But the back is the breakdown of where we're at with those contractors and what we spent so far and what's remaining, but we have budgeted that one point five. On the front top, you see that?
Yep.
Okay, yep. You made me nervous for a little bit. I know, I know, it's there somewhere. Yeah, it's on the top right here. So, no, it's a good question. But this, we, one thing Marcus and I talked about it, because we wanted this on the back, just so you can see our progress. They're still looking at kind of mid-February for the shop to be complete. The Delaware Elementary site, um, there's a lot of loose ends that Minko has stepped into. Um, and they are all, or three weeks to a month for sure that we can start getting in there, but there's just a lot of loose ends that the state is asking for that they need to before we can get full access. Okay? So that's construction, uh, district leadership team, um, sent that email out last week, Friday, Thursday, or Friday. Um, we're gonna have our first meeting January twentieth in the morning in this room. Um, and that'll be our kickoff meeting, and obviously the welcome and thank people be a part of that group, and then to start getting into needs and wants and whatnot that the district has in order to start setting up a DGF group and slash strategic plan. So that's gonna be the big task I want input, and then we'll take that to board, then obviously we'll have to do some work session at some point to, to develop that and work with our staffs and administration.
That's so informative.
It is seven AM, yep.
Waited for an hour, or is it?
I have, I, I, I had a lot of people ask me that. I said, uh, I think the agenda will go for a half hour to forty-five minutes because I gotta respect people so they can get out and get to work, I'm guessing. We're gonna learn a lot in that first meeting. It's seven AM, the best time. We have four students, and we have parents, and they have athletes, and they have activities, and they get, so it's like you know, and then I don't think, you know, I'd be here at six, but other people might say, okay, yikes, that's, you know what I mean? So we just have to work with the group and say, what is our best time? Um, it sounds like most people said they could make that work, um, and still get to work. One said, hey, I'll have to leave by seven thirty. I said, totally understand, but that's kind of what we're planning, so. Again, we'll learn a lot from that, and then set a schedule from that point on as well. Um, next thing on here is MSB conference, uh, Wednesday, we head down to the city. Make it. Um, be nice for Micah for phase one, facey training, so that'll be important for him. Uh, and it's just time for us to touch, and I'd like to really visit with you guys about the strategic planning, the needs and wants of the district, and where should we start? That process, because you are the decision makers, so it's gonna be very important to hear from you guys. Um, so I'm looking forward to that. And just in other years I've gone to MSBA, uh, their sessions, they're very informative, so. Usually walk away with, so, oh, yeah, I never thought of that, or that was helpful, or reassured what we already knew or thought, so those, it's a very good conference. Um, next on there is second semester. That starts, well, our next board meeting is January twenty-third. That's the first day of starting second semester. First semester comes to a close on January twenty. So that's an important date, I guess, too. That's all I have. Any questions?
No.
Continue.
Very beautiful. So we have the approval of the December twelfth meeting. Do we have a motion? My Amy, is there a second? Second, I got David over here, sorry, Brittany. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Oppose? Watching. Okay, so number nine, uh, this is our declaration of associations for possible conflict of interest. So, Michael, for you being a new member, you just have to say if, um, someone that does work at the school regularly, you have a tie to them. Most people up here don't think you're, you know, ex-wife, there's a teacher here, um, but if there's anything else you need to declare. It's almost us too. I think Ronnie's used to be, you had a parent, a cousin that worked here that was a parent or something. I can't remember. You always had good exams.
I guess not.
Yeah.
The school starts buying things from you.
I'm not buying anything. All right, uh, go ahead, Brittany.
Um. I always feel silly saying this because it's not directly me, but my grandmother-in-law owns Fox sanitation.
Dugly noted.
Okay, thank you. They were doing this before, we were together, so I'm, I'm for good, so, okay. That's all I got.
All right. I, I work at the Sheriff's Office, and so does the SRO. Um, myself, I, I don't have any that I'm aware of.
I do not have any that I'm aware of.
David?
My wife's cousin's wife is communicating. I don't know if that's. That's just.
Okay, beautiful. Well, that was panelists. Okay, number ten point one, this is election of a vice chair. Uh, do we have a motion for our nomination, please? Any nominations?
I nominate David.
Any other nominations? Is there a second to David being nominated? Second, second by Laura. Uh, any discussion? Hearing no other nominations or discussion, uh, Amy moved and Laura seconded. So, uh, motion to cast unanimous ballot for David Ilicson as vice chair. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ten point two clerk, do we have any nominations for the clerking position?
Laura?
You're backwards.
Oh, I'm. I have, I'm gonna. Laura shouldn't be there.
All right, we have a nomination for TV Johnson to be clerk. Is there any other nominations for the clerk? All right, do we have a second in that nomination? Second by Laura. Uh, any discussion? Hearing no other nominations, uh, David moved and Laura second, co-cast, second motion to cast unanimous ballot for Amy Johnson as clerk. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Do ten point three treasurer, do we have any nominations for the treasurer position?
I nominate Laura.
All right, any other nominations? Um, yep, I'm waiting for other nominations. I'm calling the tenth, and now I'm gonna ask you for a second. Yeah, love. Okay, so we have, uh, any other nominations? Any discussion? All right, uh, Amy moved for the item to be the treasurer, David second. Uh, second in motion to casting unanimous ballot for Laura's treasurer. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, ten point one, we have our business, uh, claims and accounts. Laura?
Uh, two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Also included in our packet is the monthly treasurer's monthly budget report. Um, leave of absence, it's not in our packet, but, um, Shannon had sent it out to us via email, approve the leave of absence for Paul Markford, his school teacher, starting January first, twenty twenty-three. And donations, we have a donation from Dusan Bobcat, and the amount of a thousand dollars to be used for middle school STEM class. Uh, approved the donation from an anonymous donor, and the amount of one thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents to be used to pay off negative student plunge balances. Prove the donation from an anonymous donor, and one fifty dollar list for the, for food service angel fund. Prove the donation for Mosquito Man, and the amount of two hundred fifty dollars for the DGF football student activity account, and approve the donation for Appliance Pros in the amount of a hundred fifty dollars for the DGF football student. Do we have a motion?
Alloped.
Motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion or questions?
Can I ask? The angel fund versus the. Negative.
It's a great question. Do you, what's the angel fund?
There's.
Yes.
Difference?
Um, the first, the large one, she just submitted then to pay off whatever right now is outstanding. The second one is just, we just have this. As.
As needed.
Okay. Thank you for the question. That's, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, very nice. Um, all right, so we have a motion by Nicole, second by Brittany. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, new unfinished school business, so twelve point one, two thousand and twenty-three school board compensation. This is in our packet here, so we can see, uh, last year, we had made a change to, to just a monthly stipend rather than writing every single meeting that we intended. Um, also, the chairperson, clerk, and treasurer have different stipends based on um, the amount of commitment, or not commitment, but time or whatever associated with that position. I don't think anybody asked for a, we didn't ask you to search anybody's, I think. I mean, you could, regional, was it regional pay through the district or the, so, um, let's get a motion, let's get a second, and then we can have discussion. So we have a motion.
So.
Who was our second?
Second.
Second by J K. All right, do we want, uh, I think I'm, would like everybody's opinion. Do we want to just stay at the current, uh, three dollars a month? Do we feel that's enough? Is it too much? Is it?
Payroll just changed last year.
We just changed it last year, yeah. How does everybody feel that that is going? I'll speak. I just personally appreciate that I don't have to fill out a sheet, and I save the district about four grand by not filling out my sheet last year. Second to that part. No, the sheet. I don't wanna go back to that. That I can, that I can assure you, I don't wanna go backwards. Yeah.
She, that's my assertion, yes.
The demise this year. I think payroll appreciates the demise of the sheet too. Are we, are we comfortable with the saying as we are as being?
I wouldn't like to keep it as.
I think it's pretty competitive from what I recall.
Yeah. It's the other side of the street. Yeah.
Yeah, it's from other districts. I mean, the, the thing, I know everyone's. Yeah.
We're better ways.
San Antonio Francis, I think the one thing we have to consider too is, um, future elections, retracting other people because it is time with families and stuff like that, so. Not that anyone's here to do it for cash, but it does uh, sometimes, I think, with time. So, I think we're good where we're at, but I do think it's not something we should ever shy away from.
Right.
Are we within reasonable boundaries?
And I think those of you that are on negotiations, certainly, I mean, fill in all the time card, you would see how much time you invest in that. It's, it's very.
Time can save you.
It can be a little bit, it's not that, but.
Can be.
It can be a tax, but I feel like it's, this has just alleviated a lot of work for the payroll. I'm comfortable with the amount. I'm comfortable with the extra stipends for the positions. Um, and I just think it's streamlined things. You know, I don't know what it does, just a flat rate too, and a lot of schools are going to that, so I appreciate that, so. All right, well, we had a motion by Nicole, second by David, uh, duly carried to set the monthly rate, continue at the three hundred dollars per month. Um, a hundred dollars for the chair monthly stipend, and then the clerk stipend is fifty dollars a month, and treasurer by yearly stipend is sixty-two fifty. Um, and then mileage and meals paid at established federal rate. Does that change recently, or is it the same?
Every person's changed that much.
Do you, are you able to just look that up and type that in here? Um, so whatever. Um, so whatever the federal rate is, that's what mileage and meals will be paid at, so, okay, good discussion, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, all right, twenty point, twelve point two, our twenty twenty-three school board meetings, that is also in our packet here. Just to note, and we had changed that earlier, is just the location of the next two meetings due to the activities that are happening in the fourth year. So we're gonna be down in the um middle school choir room. Um. And I think every month, you know, we'll meet the second and fourth. Uh, second and fourth Monday of the month, and then December is always that weird month that we have one meeting with our truth and taxation, so. We have a motion to approve. Motion by Laura, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I wanted to vote no for you, Ronnie, I couldn't do it, bud, I couldn't do it. So, Michael, Ronnie would always vote no, because of harvest. I, I loved it though, I almost did it, sorry. Okay, twelve point three, late changes, that is also in our packet, it looks like we have about ten. Ten or so people making some late changes here, if everybody has a moment to review. Oh, two of them, I'm sorry, right, oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the left, two that are moving, um do we have a motion? Was it Brittany, Brittany, okay. Is there a second? Second by David, I got David over here, all right, any uh questions or discussions on that? All those in favor say aye. Twelve point four, this would be the first reading of the following policies. One oh two, equal educational opportunities, two oh four, school board meeting minutes. Two oh five, open meetings and closed meetings, two oh seven, public curiosities. Two eleven, criminal or civil action against school districts, school board member, employer, student, and five thirty-four school meetings, do we have a motion? Motion by Brittany, is there a second? Second by EB, again, this is the first reading, um do we, uh, any discussion? There, there are the MSBA changes.
More than, more than welcome to stay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, twelve point five, non-certified contract, this is for Shannon Thiegarde, her professional, starting January twenty-third at seventeen seventeen an hour, do we have a motion? So moved, motion by Nicole, is there a second? Second by Laura, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so um just to remind the public that our, well, we'll do the next board meeting. Next board meeting is Monday, January twenty-third at six o'clock, this will be in the choir room. Um, and then we are going to do the appointment of the school board district committee representatives, so. And did you bring those copies for me of the board committees, are they in here? Okay, that's okay, I'll email them, it's fine, I think I'd email maybe. We're good, anyway, uh we're gonna go over committees, um Personnel Committee will be meeting following Monday, January twenty-third. So we have five, four people, five people, are you, you, you guys aren't going, right, Mike is going to leadership. You three are going to leadership, so um have a great time, just for public, I'm super sad, I, I got my vocal, and I was reading, and I highlighted stuff, and I'm. But I can't go, it's always such a good time, I mean, we learn a lot, and it's fun to hear other school districts and what they have going on, so. Um, we will, I'm gonna send you guys a little email, there's committees that you're interested in being on. If you wanna get off of committees, I want you to email me that, so I'll send you guys all an email, just respond, respond to me, and then we'll get it plugged in. At this time, I think the only one we're adding is the district leadership that wasn't on there before, I don't believe. Shannon and I have discussions, but we, we're not gonna take any committees off. Um, nothing, we're not adding anything else, we're not changing anything.
Right, other than if you wanna switch and go to.
The good news is, I've already informed Laura that she's gonna be the new felt liaison. Since Ronnie is retired, um so that's the only one I can confirm that will be changed, so. All right, and yes, six forty, this meeting is adjourned.